Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Eggenberger, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Eggenberger. Here. Commissioner Foster. Janowski.
Here. Here.
Commissioner Singh. Watkins.
Here.
Commissioner Weber.
Here.
And Chairperson Zuber.
I am here, thank you. And let the record reflect that we have Patrick Sloan and Aaron Schluto from staff here, and apparently we have a consultant on Zoom named Mallory Reader. So, awesome, so we are ready to go.
And also, Madam Chair, Commissioners Foster and Singh had given prior notice
Oh, thank you.
today that they would be absent.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Very good. We have minutes from October 7th. Do I hear any motions or discussion?
I move to approve.
Great.
Support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Watkins. We are sticking at the end of the alphabet so far. All in favor, please say aye.
Point of order, that was Commissioner Janowski, I think that said.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I saw you lean to your microphone and just heard you say it because I thought, okay, thank you, Commissioner Weber and Commissioner Janowski, so we're not at the end of the alphabet. Awesome, all right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, and then we have also minutes from October 21st to approve?
I move to approve.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the table by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Lee. That time I watched. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Awesome. Anything to add to the agenda this evening, Patrick?
Nothing to add, the only communication is regarding some of the ongoing zoning ordinance text amendments that we've been doing for tree preservation, signs, and wireless telecommunications. We had originally intended to have those items on tonight's agenda to continue the discussion, similar to what we've been doing at previous meetings and work sessions. But because of the volume of items on this agenda, we've decided to defer those items to December. So, those who may have been tracking those items, hoping that they would be on tonight's agenda, they're going to be shifted to December because of the number of business items that we have. So that's the only item I wanted to add into the record.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much for clarifying that. And anybody want to make a motion to approve our agenda this evening?
So moved.
All right. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Lee and support by Commissioner Eggenberger. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, very good. And Patrick, any communications beyond what you just communicated?
The only other communications we've had are a couple of public comments that we've had on one of the public hearing items that we'll discuss when we get to those items on the agenda.
Very good.
And we forwarded those to the planning commissioners earlier today.
Okay, thank you. Were there just two, or were there more than two?
There were two.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
What was the second one? I saw the one, I saw the one about Harvest Creek, were they both about Harvest Creek?
Yes.
Yeah, the second one was also about Harvest Creek, from a neighbor on the east side.
With the barn.
Yes.
Yeah, I saw that one.
And then the first one was a neighbor on the west side of South Ridge Road that lives across the street.
Oh, look, I didn't see that one, okay.
Very good, okay, so we have a section here for public comment. If you are here and you'd like to say anything that isn't, about anything that is not already covered in a public hearing, in other words, if you're here to talk about Harvest Creek, Canton Township Fire Station Number Four, or the Singh, I'm sorry, we've got a lot of public hearings tonight, the Singh executive.
No, I think we only have this as the public hearing.
Oh, oh, okay, old business, thank you, I'm sorry, I can read the agenda, honest. Good thing there's more than one of us up here. So if you're here to talk about anything, or you want to say anything about anything besides Harvest Creek, now is your opportunity, please go to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. And we will give you three minutes to speak, sir.
I'm just here again with the, my name is Charles Hudson, I'm at 2022 Elmhurst Street, and I'm just here about the, the non-conforming lots. I was hoping to get that going through. And I'm just here to support it, so that's all I have.
Public hearing? Oh, that's, oh, the zoning, oh, thank you, I'm so sorry, yes, that is a public hearing and I missed it. Okay, I need more help up here. Could someone read the agenda for me? Thank you, sir, we will, we will also, oh, it is.
That's what we just.
No, no, we didn't cancel that. No, 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 what Patrick said was that we're going to talk about the ongoing zoning changes and amendments.
About wireless and.
At future, future meetings, so the wireless, the ongoing discussion about all that. It's not on the agenda, he just wanted to clarify for everybody that might be interested, that we, we took it off the agenda because we have so many public hearing, or so many items on tonight's agenda.
Thank you.
We're helping each other out tonight.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay, very good. Very good, we're going to move into the public hearing section, we have, item number one is the zoning ordinance text amendment regarding non-conforming lots. Patrick, please tell us all about it.
Sure. For the last couple of months, we've talked about Section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance regarding non-conforming lots of record. And the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance for tonight's agenda for non-conforming lots of public record, or lots of record include allowing two or more contiguous non-conforming lots that are in single ownership to be sold or used separately under certain conditions and subject to planning commission approval. The conditions proposed in the ordinance amendment proposal include the lots being platted, connection to utilities, frontage on an approved road, and of sufficient area and with, for a principal building to comply with all setback requirements of the zoning ordinance. At the planning commission meeting on October 7th, 2024, the planning commission scheduled a public hearing on the zoning ordinance amendment proposal that's enclosed in the packet this evening. We have the proposal itself in the request for action, and then we also have in the packet a redlined version of the draft that shows what's being deleted, what's being included. So essentially, there's some language being added for platted residential lots that have public water and sewer to allow two or more lots in same ownership to build on them separately. There's also another provision for platted lots that have public sanitary sewer but do not have public water. And the text there is similar, but it's written a little bit different because the state law distinguishes between those platted lots with water versus those without. So we have two separate sections there that address them to be consistent with the way that the state law is written. The proposed amendment was drafted, in the draft, and the packet is dated September 12th, 2024. There haven't been any changes or updates to the draft since then, so the draft that's before you this evening for the public hearing is the same draft that we had looked at in September and in October. So this is scheduled for a public hearing this evening, and upon completion of the public hearing, staff's recommendation is to recommend approval of the amendment as stated in the ordinance proposal. And if the planning commission recommends approval of the amendments to the zoning ordinance, the recommendation and the ordinance text will proceed to the Township Board of Trustees for action, and that would be two readings at the board level. So that concludes our staff report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to talk about this? He did. We heard you.
And we'll still need a motion to open and close public hearing as well.
Okay, we need a motion to open a public hearing? All right, all right, we have a motion by Commissioner Lee and support by Commissioner Weber, right? Was that you? Okay. Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Anyone want to speak about this beyond what was already said? All right, Commissioner Eggenberger moved, made a motion to close the public hearing, and Commissioner Lee supported that, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, I have no issues with this. Anybody got anything that they want to bring up about this? We've already seen it.
I think we've discussed it pretty thoroughly.
Yeah, I think so too.
Nothing's changed since our last discussion, right, Patrick?
Correct.
I appreciate Patrick kind of pulling this together because I think it was a problem without an answer, and I think this is the great way to take care of it. Thank you, and hopefully we'll be able to move you forward.
Would you like to help with that by making a motion?
Oh, I live for motions.
You do?
I will on this one. I move to recommend approval of the amendment to the zoning ordinance to amend Section 3.05 Nonconforming Lots of Record as stated in the attached ordinance proposal.
Second.
Everyone seconded that, okay. I'm going to give that one to Commissioner Janowski. So we have a motion by Commissioner Eggenberger and support by Commissioner Janowski, just to try to make up for not hearing you before, so. All right, very good. Anybody, any further discussion? All right, Commissioner Eggenberger, could you please call the vote?
Chair.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger, yes. Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber.
Yes. Motion granted, and good luck to you, sir, we wish you the best. Yep. Great, next item on our agenda is item number 075-PDM-7781 Harvest Creek. We're considering planned development district minor for parcel numbers 075-99-0004-002 and 075-99-005-000, also known as 1205 South Ridge Road. The property is located on the east side of South Ridge Road between Payne Street and Proctor Road. Proposed planned development district minor for residential development. Patrick, please tell us more.
Thank you. The applicant for the subject site proposes to develop 18 single-family homes on a 7.1-acre site at 1205 South Ridge Road. That is highlighted in the map up on the screen. The subject property includes the Lower Rouge River, that's far on the south side of the property here. And there's an existing single-family residence on the south side of the property, there's a, there's a house there with a detached structure. And the house that's currently on the property is proposed to remain as one of the 18 units. The way that the development is laid out is that one of those parcels would be the remaining house, so it would be a little bit different in terms of the access coming off of the proposed private road, but it does allow that existing house to remain in the context of the rest of the development, and it, it also provides a little mix of what's existing versus what's new. The proposed development is mostly concentrated in the north half of the site, and there's one public entrance proposed on South Ridge Road. So the area on the north side of the site where it's mostly flat and unwooded, and then farther south, the topography is really steep and it goes downward to the Rouge River to the south, and it's heavily wooded there. So there's a lot of preservation of the steep slopes and the woodland areas, particularly on the south side of the site. And in a few moments, we'll put on the development plan on the screen there where you'll see how that's laid out. In 2022, both parcels that are part of this development were rezoned from our, our single, or our rural residential to our three single-family residential. The rezoning application was made by the current owner of the property with the intent of developing the property for single-family residential use. As you noted, the site is proposed as a planned development district, it's a minor PDD, and the difference between a minor PDD and a major PDD is that the minor PDD, it's a one-step process. With a major PDD, it has a preliminary PDD and a final PDD process that are essentially the same. With a minor PDD, it's just a one-step process in the sense where there's one meeting of the planning commissioner, one action by the planning commission, and then one action by the board instead of two separate processes. But with a minor PDD, it still has to follow the same rules, there's still a public hearing, there's still review by the planning commission, there's still recommendation by the planning commission, and there's a final action by the Board of Trustees. The PDD is required to result in definite benefits to the community and the site as a whole. The project sponsor proposes the following definite benefits for this development. The first is the preservation of heavily wooded areas and steep topography on the south side of the site along and near the Rouge River. The second is that over 40% of the site will remain as open space, or about 2.87 acres, which exceeds the 25% minimum open space requirement of a PD. Third, the pond outflow is designed to be reduced to 10% of the allowable outflow to improve stormwater management on the site. And fourth, the architecture is compatible with River Hill Ridge, which is the development located to the north and the east of this development. Although River Hill Ridge, it's technically not located in Cherry Hill Village, it includes similar lot sizes and similar architectural style as Cherry Hill Village, and the Harvest Creek PDD designs, they strive for consistency with the Cherry Hill Village design while also having the 50% brick on the house. Some of the items that we want to cover with this site is that, first is the overall density. The R3 zoning district allows for roughly three units per acre. And that includes whether it's a detached or attached condo. In this case, these are going to be site condos where they'll have their units on individual lots. The proposed density is about 2.53 dwelling units per acre. For the access management, there's one entrance proposed on South Ridge Road, and that entrance will be located near the north part of the site. Before I switch over to the plans, I just want to emphasize, this area of Ridge Road, if you've driven down it, there are some horizontal alignment changes with the curve to the south. There's also some vertical alignment issues too, in terms of visibility. So those are elements that are going to have to be worked through with Wayne County. South Ridge Road is under the jurisdiction of Wayne County, and to my knowledge, they haven't reviewed this plan yet, so in reviewing the proposed access, they may have standards for the driveway location, they may have standards for the width, any tapering, any turn lanes, as well as any alignment issues, north or south, but mostly to the south is where we see most of the alignment issues. So Wayne County will have to review all that when it looks over the plan to determine if it meets county standards. There's not a secondary access required for emergency vehicles for a unit this small at 18 units. Because of the relatively small size of the proposed development, and there aren't any known level of service deficiencies at the intersections of Cherry Hill Road and South Ridge Road, or the intersection of South Ridge Road and Proctor Road, a traffic study was not required for this development from staff. However, with our concerns with the horizontal and vertical alignments, Wayne County will be required to review the intersection, and any deficiencies must be addressed during site plan review. So next, I'll go to the, I'll go to the plan itself, and I'll bring up what's proposed on the site. So here's a, here's a map of the site itself and the plan itself, and it shows both parcels. And as you see, the development is concentrated in about the north half of the site, and then the existing house is a little bit further south of the proposed cul-de-sac where it currently exists. And then west of that is where the proposed stormwater pond will be. So the topography starts to drop farther south of that towards the river itself. So the proposal is that the, the pond on the south side of the cul-de-sac would catch and hold the stormwater, and then there is a proposed outlet to the Lower Rouge River. Stormwater management is under the jurisdiction of Wayne County, so this will also be a plan that Wayne County will have to review. In our early discussions with the applicant on the proposed development, one of the things that we mentioned is to try to maximize the size of the pond and try to design it such that the pond can hold back as much water as possible, especially in the case where about a year and a half ago, when there were the floods in August of 2023, there were areas of north of here, of this location, that were impacted by flooding along the, the Lower Rouge and Cherry Hill Village. So as a strategy to try to maximize the functionality of stormwater ponds for any new developments around areas where there have been known flooding issues, those are seen as definite benefits in terms of improving the stormwater functionality in the area in terms of exceeding any county requirements. For the schedule of regulations and modifications, there are several modifications that are requested. One is a, for a smaller minimum lot area than required by the zoning ordinance. The minimum lot size proposed in this PDD is 5,750 square feet. The minimum lot width proposed is 55 feet. There are a few lots that are a little narrower that are along the curvilinear parts of the cul-de-sac where it's above 50, but less than 55 feet wide. The minimum front yard setbacks proposed are variable. The R3 district requires a minimum front yard setback of 30 feet, and the, the variable nature of the front yard setbacks is that the minimum front yard setback proposed for the garage is 22 feet, so that a car can be parked in the driveway and not overhang a sidewalk. The minimum front yard setback for the house is 15 feet, and the minimum front yard setback for the front open porch is seven feet. So what that will do is it will allow the garage to be recessed behind the front of the home, so that the garage is not the predominant feature. The prominent feature would most likely be the front open porch because of the minimum seven-foot front yard setback. And then if the garage is recessed back from the home, and there's enough space so that a parked vehicle doesn't overhang the sidewalk, there can still be onsite parking without having that garage door right out front center of the house. For comparison purposes, the minimum front yard setbacks in River Hill Ridge are 15 feet for the homes and seven feet for the front porches, so there will be some consistency in form with the development to the north and east. The minimum proposed side yard setbacks are five feet on each side. The minimum rear yard setback proposed is 25 feet. The minimum lot depth is, proposed is 105 feet, which is sufficient for the front yard setbacks that we noted, the rear yard setback that we noted, and then to construct a conforming home. The minimum width, or the minimum, maximum depth to width ratio in the ordinance is two and a half. Unit 13, which is the existing home, it has an irregular-sized lot, just based on trying to get the lot frontage up to the cul-de-sac and service the home, and instead of servicing it through the existing driveway. So as a result, that depth is about 2.78 times the lot width. Not a major issue there, but it is a modification nevertheless. For the road easement width, the minimum easement width is proposed to be 55 feet instead of 60 feet. For comparison purposes, the road easement width in River Hill Ridge is 55 feet. 55 feet is a sufficient width to still have a conforming 27-foot wide road, to have the street landscaping and trees, and to have the sidewalks. It's just a little bit of a tighter configuration than a 60-foot easement would be. There is also a modification for the frontage landscape easement and buffer landscaping. The condominium ordinance requires that the frontages along major roads have a 50-foot wide landscape buffer. River Hill Ridge to the north does not, because it's designed much like Cherry Hill Village, where right off of Ridge Road, you start to have the units. And so what's proposed here is to not have that 50-foot buffer landscape, but instead to just have the entrance and then the units themselves. And finally, the other modification is the cul-de-sac diameter. The condominium ordinance requires 110-foot diameter for a cul-de-sac. The fire department allows a smaller diameter, and a diameter of 90 feet is proposed, which was acceptable to the fire department when they reviewed it. That'll be something that's finalized during site plan review, but that was something that they have as a modification. For the development itself, there are sidewalks along the internal streets on both sides, and there's also a sidewalk along the site's frontage of Ridge Road that goes all the way to the south. For natural features, we noted that there are steep slopes and woodlands that are preserved in the south part of the site, where the Lower Rouge River is. Most of the trees will be preserved. On the plan itself, there are 15 regulated trees and seven landmark trees that are proposed to be removed. The tree mitigation requirements will be reviewed in more detail at the time of site plan review, but the applicant proposes on the PD plan to comply with the tree preservation standards of the zoning ordinance. For the architecture of the home, the homes in the designs will comply with the zoning ordinance to have 50% brick with a four-foot horizontal offset along the rear elevation. The home models proposed include the minimum brick and the offset, and the homes will have siding consistent with other areas of Cherry Hill Village where it's a fiber cement siding that'll have a palette of many different color options. For units one and 18, those are the entry units along Ridge Road. And they will be the first units that you see in the development, and they'll be the units that you see when you drive by. Units one and 18 will have their sides facing Ridge Road, and the elevation drawings in the plan set show enhanced features on the road sides of those units that include a reverse gable and additional windows. And at the time of site plan review, we can discuss any enhanced landscaping along the frontage to have more privacy for those units. That's something the developer may be proposing anyway, just to allow the initial owners to have that privacy there. And then the last item that I'll mention in our report is utilities. We don't yet know the final location of the water and sewer lines. That'll be subject to the Engineering Services Division review. There's an existing water main along the east side of Ridge Road, and there's an existing sewer main stub just south of Payne Street to the north, that's also on the east side of Ridge Road. Stormwater management is under the jurisdiction of Wayne County, and a stormwater pond is proposed south of the development with an outlet to the Lower Rouge River. The stormwater system will also be reviewed by Wayne County. Staff's recommendation is approval of the Harvest Creek Plan Development District, including the proposed modifications from the zoning ordinance and the condominium ordinance as provided in the PDD agreement and the plan documents, subject to all state, county, and township requirements. The last item that I want to mention is that today we received two written communications from neighbors in the area. One was from Bethany Patterson Dupont at 1170 Ridge Road South, and the other one was from Matthew Morodarsky at 50549 Eisenhower Drive. Both comments had expressed concerns with the development, and we had forwarded these to the planning commissioners earlier, but we can talk about these comments in more detail, either during the hearing or during deliberations. So that concludes our staff report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. We have a motion to open a public hearing?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Weber, Commissioner Weber, and support by Commissioner Watkins to open a public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is the project sponsor available to answer any questions? Great, come on up to the microphone, Mr. Priest.
My name is Glenn Sorens, I'm with Michael Priest, an associate for the engineer for the project.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Glenn Sorens.
Thank you, I'll try and remember that next time.
I believe Chris is here, the developer, if you have any other questions, but I can
Okay.
answer any for engineering and layout and development.
Do you have anything to add to what Patrick said?
No, it's just, the, the development was a, was designed to match the River Hill Ridge to the east, it's kind of, and the Cherry Hill Village to the north, and it's kind of like, a little buffer between that and Ridge and the Lower River Rouge, so it was kind of kept in the same lot sizes, same type of houses, same setbacks. And then obviously, I want to emphasize the, the issue with the stormwater pond, or not, the benefit from the stormwater pond that we are releasing at 10% of what we're allowed.
Okay.
So the pond will be oversized, hold back quite a bit of water.
Very good, okay, I'm sure questions will come up as we. Okay, I'm sure questions will come up as we deliberate. Let you know, thank you. All right, Commissioner Janowski.
The other.
Oh, I'm sorry, is there anybody else from the public who'd like to speak about this project, please, sir? Thank you.
Yes, it's Richard Brown. I'm actually the resident just south across the Rouge from the property, the new development. I was here, I think, maybe 18 months ago, and I still have three, the three same questions. It's not clear to me where the new exit is onto Ridge, and we did express big concerns about the safety of that exit onto Ridge just because of that dangerous bend. I'm not sure if that has been addressed. Second is the floodplain. It's not clear to me that the floodplain is going to be respected the same as the property development to the east. I'm not sure. It looks to me that we're actually encroaching much closer on the river. Maybe I'm wrong, but it's the map is not clear. And thirdly, in the wintertime, my wife and I spoke about this, in the wintertime, we can see right at the new development. So from a privacy standpoint, I am wondering if it's possible to have an evergreen barrier across that way to maintain the same privacy.
Thank you.
So just so I'm clear, sir, you live you live at the corner of Proctor and Ridge, is that right?
Yes. Just south of the development.
Just like, so you're immediately south of the development?
Just on the other side of the river. Just south of the river.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the project? State your name and address for the record.
Susan Wisneski, 50996 Proctor Road. One of my major concerns is on one of the last things they said with the pond. This last year and a half, which you mentioned too, in the water, this last year I got over two feet in my basement. And with where that pond is going to be and dump water into the Rouge River, I'm not really fond of that part because it would be a direct conflict of what I would need. And I really, we've been rural, we'd like to be rural. It's nice they are planning to put the rural closer to us rather than the homes. I mean, Canton just keeps filling every lot that they can, but we like to be left alone, and we would like to know that the road is going to be safe because that just trying to get out onto Ridge Road for us is a problem. So if you try to go down farther and try to get out, it's accident waiting to happen. There's just several little things like that that we're concerned about, but one vote isn't counting for much, we know. But thank you.
We hear you, thank you very much. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Sue Curry. I live at just east of this development in River Hill Ridge at 50609 Eisenhower. So my backyard will be adjacent to, it looks like, Lot 6. And I know there was a proposal a couple of years ago, and there was concerns raised about the water runoff because we already have a real swampy backyard, and our property is a little lower than than this property. And we had a French drain put in, and we still have kind of a swampy backyard. And I know that there was an environmental agency, I think it's called Eagle, have you heard of it? Okay. And they didn't approve of the previous proposal. So I'm just curious, have they reviewed this and do they approve of it? And, you know, what measures have been included in here to address the runoff issue?
Thank you. Anyone else, sir?
Hi, I'm Jignesh Patel. I'm on same street, 50585 Eisenhower. Whatever issue she mentioned, right, I have same issues. My property will be like maybe besides 10 and 11 lot on the Eisenhower side. So whatever she said, we have French drain, still we are having same issue yet. So I'm with her.
Thank you. Anyone else, sir?
Hello, John Brim, 50537 Eisenhower. So our house is directly up against where the existing house is, Lot 13. I was curious, one, there is another detached building to the south of that existing building. So I was curious what the plan was for that, and then also what the plan is for the tree line basically that goes along the whole way there. I heard something about seven trees being removed, but no real talk of any conservation along the east border. So there is kind of a hill between 13 and then the backside of River Hill Run there. So like some more clarity about what's going to happen with that tree line. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Watkins to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Awesome. Okay, Patrick, can you address the questions and concerns of the neighbors?
Sure. So I'll try to catch what I what I was able to, and then I can defer to the applicant's engineer on some of the others.
Can you explain what the process is with Eagle or with the county?
Yes.
Sure. The, which process?
Eagle.
They brought up Eagle.
Oh, yeah, the Eagle process, that typically takes place during site plan review, generally not during PDD unless there's a pending permit. So that that can vary between being a process in PDD or site plan.
Can I clarify that?
Sure.
Actually, we applied to Eagle about a year and a half ago for this, mainly because there's the pond. There's an existing pond shown as a wetland on the existing condition sheet. So we got approval to fill that pond. I know that the residents from River Hill, what is that, River Hill Ridge, a couple of them wrote in during the public hearing process for that, that they had swampy backyards because that whole, this whole parcel and the single-family home to the north all kind of drains from the northeast or northwest down to the east and into their backyards. So we wanted, and I think they had some issues with that pond overflowing and going into their rear yards also. So we applied for that Eagle permit. We got that about a year ago. As part of this development, there's going to be rear yard storm sewers. So the rear yard storm sewer will be along the north and the east property line. So everything that's coming onsite from that that house to the north and everything that's flowing from our site to the east that would go onto their yards currently undetained and is going to be captured into the storm sewer. So that will relieve their rear yard flooding issues.
The pond that you're filling, Patrick, you can help me, is this the pond that I'm looking over here in the corner of River Hill Ridge?
It's down on the screen there.
This this one right here on the far west, is that what we're talking about?
I'm looking at aerial photo of the area, so I'm not.
That's east.
Yeah.
That's the pond that was permitted to be filled. Apparently, it's kind of a nuisance mosquito haven and just kind of overflows and just flows into the the rear yards of the neighboring development.
Yeah, and then there's the proposed pond.
Patrick, you have a copy of that permit?
Of the wetland permit?
The permit to fill that wetland.
Yeah, we have that. Yeah, that was, I don't think it's in the packet, but it was in one of the prior submittals for the PDD.
You haven't filled it yet.
No.
You were saying that Eagle, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I just want to make sure we go through the all the questions first before we get to the to the planning commission.
I can address some of the other comments, too.
There was the tree issue and.
Yeah, so mainly the the trees are mainly concentrated to the south along the steep banks. There's not much north of that that bank line, although there's some to be removed. As part of the the process with Wayne County, that pond will have to be landscaped, so I'm sure, I'm assuming the development, the developer will be amenable to installing like evergreens or something along the south side of that pond. But most of the site's trees that would provide the buffer to this property to the south will be remaining.
I think the question was the trees to the east, though.
The trees to the east along the property line mostly would be removed because we got, there's limited backyards, and we need the the storm sewer in there, alleviate some of the flooding problems and capture drainage for these lots.
The barn was also a question.
Yeah, the one, are we talking the the building that's just south of the pond? Is that one will be removed?
Yeah, I guess that's.
That's in the middle of one of the lots.
I believe that's what they were asking about. Is that correct?
There's a second.
Sorry, sir, we need you to, we've closed the public hearing. No, we've closed the public hearing, so thank you for clarifying.
But that's the barn, right?
Yeah, this will most likely be removed because there are single-family homes along this stretch.
But there's another building down.
There's a barn to the north, too. What is that building? The house.
That looks like a detached garage building. That would most likely be retained.
This building right here. See if I can bring that up.
Oh, it's shown on the site plan as a.
I think that belongs to the that house on Lot 13, and I think it would be up to whoever buys that house, whether they want to keep that or not.
Okay.
I don't.
Um, sorry, excuse me, sir, we've closed the public hearing. Thank you for your comments, but let's let him address that.
The floodplain is shown on the existing.
Sorry, sir.
We will, we will address it, sir.
We heard you, but we don't, we can't, we can't have the audience driving the meeting. Thank you.
If we go to the existing conditions page, sheet two, the FEMA floodplain is hatched in green.
Green? We don't have color.
It's green, it's black. This is hatch. Dash, two dotted line. This is the floodplain line right there.
Okay, so the, so that garage is not in the floodplain, according to the FEMA documents, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so it's labeled here on the plan where it says FEMA 1% annual chance of flood, and then it has this thicker black line there that delineates that.
We had other questions about privacy from the south.
Yeah, as I mentioned, most of the trees to the, most of the trees are are to the south part where that steep slope starts, and most, and those trees will be retained.
Okay.
All the development is to the north. There'll be a few that might be removed, but we can also add some along the the south end of the pond.
Is there any possibility that you could add some evergreens south of the, at the south property line?
Like the south part of the development?
Yes, between the, between the river and the south neighbors.
I would have to look, but I think that's pretty wooded already.
And that's, that's something that we can also look at during the time.
Thank you, please let us answer. Okay.
So that's also something that we can look at during the time of site plan review.
Site plan review.
In the PD plans, there's not a landscape plan, and there's not a landscape plan that's required to be included in PDD plans. So in terms of street trees or any other tree mitigation, those are not shown here. But I will highlight here in turquoise, this is the southern property where there's the existing house. So going further south on this parcel, you can't see it through the trees, but the Lower Rouge is there. And then going almost to the south of the property line, it's pretty heavily wooded all the way almost to the south.
Okay.
So adding any trees there, when the landscape plan is developed, we'll have more information. But when the landscape architect prepares that, he or she may look at that and and think that it may not be feasible for additional trees, given that it's an existing woodland.
Yeah, and we don't want to remove trees to add trees if possible. Okay. Is there anything we didn't address from the audience that, if you could make it very brief? The exit, oh, where the located, thank you very much. The exit from this, it's at the north side of the property, so.
Yeah, so on the north side of the property and kind of judging by across the street, there's, there's a couple of driveways, so it looks like it's just between those two driveways. So the entrance may be somewhere around here that's, that's not directly across either one of the driveways. It's, it's a little south of this northern driveway, almost halfway between the two, just by eyeballing it between the plans and the aerial. Now ultimately, it's going to be decided by Wayne County whether that meets the horizontal and vertical alignment. But having the driveway farther north allows for it to get out of the alignment challenges on the south side of the lot and as well as the vegetation. So there's a little bit better alignment the farther north that driveway is, but ultimately, Wayne County's going to look that over.
Patrick, could you explain what vertical and horizontal alignment is?
Sure. So horizontal alignment is really looking at side to side. So if you're, if you're going down, kind of like a bird's eye view, let's take topography out of the equation, the horizontal alignment is that if you're going southbound on Ridge, you know that you're going to be taking a left. So as you're going and looking, you're not going to see inbound traffic or traffic coming towards you because when it's headed straight, it's going to be veering left, this traffic's going to be veering right. So that horizontal alignment, cars are going to naturally have to go slower in order to see each other. So, so that'll be going the side to side as the horizontal. The vertical alignment is your elevation changes. So as someone is farther north and driving southbound, they're going to be going downhill, so that vertical alignment goes downhill. So as you're going downhill, you're also getting ready to make a turn as well. And then similarly, the people on the south are going uphill and they're making a turn as well. So whenever vertical alignment and horizontal alignment is combined, people will naturally go slower. I don't know what the speed limit is there. I think the posted speed limit might be 45, but it'd be great if it were lowered just because of the conditions of the area, but those are some of the natural conditions that will naturally slow down traffic and cause people pulling out of a driveway to maybe take an extra second or be a little bit more cautious with making a turn out.
Okay. And we did hear that that there are concerns about the traffic and the visibility there, so thank you. Okay.
Can't take his, we can't take his comment.
Yeah, we, I'm sorry.
Can't take his comment.
We can hear your comment at site plan, at the site plan review, but we've already closed the public hearing. Of order. Okay, I understand your question.
Yeah, we did, we did talk about this a little bit at the rezoning, where there is a property owner to the north. This property that's surrounded in turquoise there, that belongs to somebody else. And I don't know if that owner was approached by the current developer as part of, part of the development. Ideally, it would have been great to have a drive off of Payne Street and then it serviced the other development. But if someone owns this property, they like living there, they don't want to drive across, it's their prerogative to to not allow cross-access. So that's the reason why we have the the proposed road coming off of Ridge that's on the plans.
All right, I'm going to ask for comments from the, from the planning commission, so I'm going to start with Commissioner Janowski.
Most of my stuff is opinion, but I know there's a precedence established with the other subdivisions, but if I was on the planning commission, then I would not vote for that density. The density of this, it looks like it's compacted, the ma- The density of this, it looks like it's compacted to the maximum amount of density, and I understand pro forma, but, it just really, and myself, uh, looking at it and the designs and everything, it looks, just looks like a horrible place for people, so. Some of the things you can go across, the density of lots, ten-foot side lots, twelve-seven-fifty versus fifty-seven-fifty for regulated for the area, the lot width with the ten, ten-foot side yards, fifteen foot in the front, the roads themselves being narrow, the cul-de-sac, the landscape fifteen, um, regulated, and seven landmark trees aren't going to be replaced, um, the stormwater still is a concern, I haven't looked at that, or, I don't thoroughly understand that right now with the height and elevations, I think the seven-eleven's good, but I don't know what that does to adjacent properties. So overall, I, I don't approve this or like this at all, I think it's a horrible addition to our community.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz, you had some questions about the Eagle permitting, I did, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but-
Yeah.
-I want to re-enter in all the questions.
Someone, I think you brought up something about Eagle never approved of a design in your subdivision? I mean, yeah, I, I, I want to address this particular issue, so, I'd like her to talk, if that's okay.
Yeah, could you go to the microphone, please?
Let me enter the question, please.
Yeah.
Yeah, please be, be brief. You have a very long agenda.
It was my understanding, I, I really wasn't too involved, my neighbor was involved. Uh, two years ago, there was a different plan put forward, and, um, he told me that Eagle did not approve of it, did not approve of it because of the runoff, and so, all I'm asking-
For this development?
For this development, yes.
Previous, the previous development at this location.
Was there another development proposed for this, I thought, are we talking about the rezoning?
Okay.
Patrick?
Um, I, I don't recall, because at a rezoning, there's a certain number of things that we consider, that it's a, it's a lower threshold than a PDD, I, I don't recall if there was any Eagle findings.
Understood, but was there another development proposed for this property at some point?
Not that I recall, if it was, it would have predated the zoning, which was an RR district, which would be unlikely that someone would propose an RR development.
I think, I think that person is probably referring to the rezoning hearing that was, what was that, a year and a half ago, two years ago, Patrick?
Yeah.
And there wouldn't have been an Eagle permit at that time. Would not have been.
So, um, yeah, I don't, I think that's a non-issue, because this development has to go through stringent Wayne County rules, uh, especially regarding the backyards, the backyards cannot drain onto your property, it's not allowed, uh, engineering would flag that, Wayne County would flag that, so, your drainage would come into the backyards through a storm sewer, is what you said, right?
Yeah, the, the stuff that's coming onto the sites, from that parcel to the north, will be caught in the rear yard storm sewers of one through four, and onsite would be the five through twelve.
So, at site plan, will you have a grading plan that I can look at?
Yeah, there will be a preliminary grading plan for site plan.
So, yeah. That's customary for any development, you can't drain off-site onto another property, you have to catch it, and, you know, we can check that, engineering can check that also, so I think it's going to be an improvement to your backyards, this drainage, because no lo, right now, it's, it's all draining towards your yards, I could see it, but this will, will stop it and catch it, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep. With regard to your entrance, I, I think that's probably the best location, you want to be as far, far north as possible, just like Patrick said, further away from that bend, so you have more site distance, and I think Wayne County will look at it that way. The last point I have is, I don't like this dead end, I, I don't know why developers do this, the dead end, I mean, that's for a future connection, that never, ever happens, it's a bad design, and, I get it, you're trying to make more lots, is what you're trying to do, but, uh, let's say an emergency vehicle tries to go in there, well, now they have to back out, as opposed to the cul-de-sac, so, just my opinion on, on the dead end design, it's never a good design, unless you own the adjacent property, and there's an agreement in place, that that's going to be built with the continuation of the road. We've seen that on, uh, Lots Road, I think, that same crappy design, that never happened, and, um, I just want to state that here, that's all I got.
Thank you. Your engineering insights are always appreciated. Commissioner Weber.
So, I guess I'm going to start with commentary that people are probably sick of hearing me say. Once again, we're being, we're being asked to be, make, make a decision without all the information in front of us. And particularly, I'm talking about Ridge Road, and I know this is just the PDD step, but putting a PDD in place is effectively amending our zoning ordinance, which is, once it's done, it's not that it can't be undone, but it's, it's pretty firm. I'm uncomfortable approving this, not knowing what Wayne County's going to say about Ridge Road, uh, the driveway entrance, I'm uncomfortable approving without really having a full understanding of the, the wetland issue, and, and how that's going to be addressed by Wayne County. I guess I'm kind of with, in the school with Commissioner Janowski, is I don't particularly care for the plan, to be honest with you, in this small space, but, um, but, that being said, I can't just deny it for that reason, I do think it's, it's worthy of holding off making any decisions on this, given the gravity of, of approving a PDD, knowing what's going to be the outcome of the, of the traffic information and the wetlands information. And Patrick, you can tell me I'm wrong in saying that, but that's, that's where I stand on this, I'm not inclined to approve this as, as it sits tonight.
Yeah, and you're, I mean, you're not wrong, the planning commission can defer or postpone action on an application pending review of other information, so, if there's something with a traffic concern, or a concern with natural features or wetlands, um, PDDs can be postponed, um, it's just in the motion, if there's a motion to postpone it, to, uh, state what information you want the applicant to come back, uh, what findings you want to be made, um, we've, we've done this before for developments, so that, um, we know going away, um, what, what information is expected back.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Is there a question I could answer regarding the wetland?
I want to see what Wayne County says about, about, when you're, with your report that comes from Wayne County, I want to see a report from Wayne County on the, on Ridge Road.
Uh, Ridge Road, I understand, but Eagle has already permitted the filling of the wetland.
Wayne County, I thought Wayne County was reviewing, was reviewing the wetlands.
No, Wayne County just-
So there's no permitting required or, or, do you still need the Eagle permit?
That's an Eagle permit, which we already have, Wayne County regulates the stormwater.
Well, okay, that being said, so, there you brought that up, you know, one of the questions raised in one of the letters we received is about impact on infrastructure. We know, we know the issues we have in the township already with, with infrastructure, both from a DTE level, uh, water and sewer, all that sort of thing, and I'm not saying that's your problem necessarily, and that the size of this project is not necessarily going to send either of those things off, off the chart, but these things build on each other, and, you know, keep, we keep putting them off and putting them off, we get told the DTE's going to address this, or Wayne County's going to address that, and kind of like Commissioner Cruz's dead end thing, it never happens. So, a- again, I'm just, I'm just tired of being asked to make decisions as the planning commission, when we don't have the whole picture of what's going to, what's going to happen here. That's where I'm at on this, I don't really, I don't really have anything else to say at this point.
Thank you. Commissioner Egenberger?
Uh, yes, thank you, thank you to, uh, previous commissioners, I think they're doing a great job of bringing up some issues that my non-engineering background is not seeing. Actually, what I was seeing, and, assuming it doesn't really matter, but there's a driveway to that one house that's going to stay, what's happening with that, is that a dirt driveway? Is it-
Yeah, it's just a gravel access driveway right now, it'll be removed, that, that was just meant for one house, it's on the curve, it's on the hill of Ridge Road, it wasn't a suitable entrance for the development.
Yeah, it's, it's too far south, it would be right there on the bend, yeah, I see that. Uh, I understand the concerns about, uh, trying to jam a bunch of houses in this area, and I get that when you look at all that, that is, it's, I guess percentage-wise, not as much, but they really are right on top of each other.
Yeah, we are trying to mimic the, this is the same lot width and depth of the river hill ridge that's right behind it, it's just kind of a continuation of that, just to the east, to Ridge Road, just because it's that last little piece, that last vacant piece in there.
Right.
Wanted to keep it the same.
Well, I'm, I, uh, I would like to wait to see the traffic study, I don't want to say okay to something and then find out that it's not, we're not able to make it a safe spot.
Is there a traffic study required?
Well, I'm sorry, I said the wrong, I used the wrong words, the, the Wayne County, looking at it.
Okay.
But, why wasn't a traffic study required, Patrick?
The size.
It's a small-
Um, when we, when we looked at it, um, we didn't, um, when we looked at it with our engineering division, um, we didn't see any existing level of service issues with the, um, intersections of Ridge and Proctor to the south, and Ridge and Cherry Hill to the north, um, based on, um, the smaller size of the development for an eighteen-unit development, so, um, there, there can be one required either by the board or the planning commission, but at the staff level, we didn't see anything from a traffic study standpoint that we necessarily wanted to see, and a lot of times, the traffic studies, they will look at, uh, the level of service at intersections, and whether or not improvements need to be made, um, our concerns were more with, uh, what Wayne County had in terms of the alignment and lines of sight.
Have you submitted to Wayne County at all?
No, well, not yet.
Could you introduce yourself, sir?
My name is Chris Karaputakis, I'm-
Use the microphone.
My name is Chris Karaputakis, I am the developer.
Okay.
And we did the traffic study, and the traffic study, uh, was turned over to Patrick probably about a year ago, at least a year ago.
Do you know who did that study?
Um, I, I have it at the office, I didn't bring that with me.
For, for this development?
Yes, yes.
I would have Wade Trim look at that and, and bring it to the board.
Yeah, that was the first thing we did, um, probably at least a year, year and a half ago. And I do own the property, uh, to the south, uh, that's got the house on it and the barn.
Right, that's one part, I mean, you're going to join them, I assume?
Doug brings up a good point, i- if Wayne County has not seen this, and they, they may require the traffic study, well, they may make you relocate the drive, and that changes your whole design, I mean, that's, that's something that could happen, uh, so your PDD is shot now, you know?
I, I guess we're taking it one step at a time, if, if you approve it and it goes to Wayne County.
But you're asking us to approve the PDD, when Wayne County hasn't even weighed in yet, you know, that's, it's a little bit of a backwards.
That would be the next step.
Commissioner Lee? Or, did you have any more?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I, I was trying to figure out that road too, why it ended, are you trying to connect with Payne at some point? Payne Street just north?
No, we don't own the property to the north.
That's what I figured, that is weird, okay.
We're actually in negotiation with the guy, but, I mean, I don't know if it's going to happen or not.
Sure, I understand, that's the only question I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Watkins?
So, super quickly, I think a whole lot has been said, and I won't take up a whole lot of time, I think, I try and look at it from a developer's standpoint, um, I don't have a big problem with, with the way that the site's been developed, it's a tight site, um, and when you have a tight site as a developer, you have to, you have to maximize, and I totally understand that, the one thing we might have a problem with here, just from a planning standpoint, is, I know Payne Street, all right, I was not a fan when that development came about, because there's no Xcel Dcel off of Payne at all, you don't have a sidewalk, and there's nothing happening on that corner that says to me that we're going to add more units to the south, and allow for things to get slower, at all. So, I don't care where the entrance is, and I'm looking, Patrick, if you could tell me, I see there's some sort of Xcel Dcel, it looks like it's, it's de minimis, though, coming out of the, uh, out of development, I, you know, it doesn't show here on the, on this, uh, on what we're looking at, but Payne is quickly approaching, and there's noth, yeah, and there's nothing that, there's no Xcel Dcel for Payne, you either turn out, there we are, thank you so much, no one, there, there is no ownership at all on that lot, that, that's just to the south of Payne Street, and Payne is, is going to, forgive the pun, and quite frankly, going to be a pain, um, when this development comes in, so, I think there's some things that need to be work out, worked out, um, there's still some things that need to happen, would, would I be comfortable with doing this and saying, yeah, go forward today? We would, if we had, like, complete information, um, knowing where, you know, the ingress, egress is going to be, that's so important in this case, that's so important, because if Wayne County comes back and they say, guess what, you can't put that right there, that changes the entire configuration, and for me, and for you, and for the engineering team, you have to go back to the drawing board and reconfigure these units, I love development, but I'd like for it to be done right, and I think there's a couple of things that we need to know before you can lock this in, thanks so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, no one has brought up the aesthetics of the buildings.
That's your job.
I guess. Can you put those up, Patrick, and are we, are we going to get to make more, have more comments at site plan approval about the, the exterior design?
There would be at site plan, but probably not as many as you'd, you'd want to have at PD, just because PD can, if there's any, uh, conditions, those can be put into the PD agreement, those can be enforced, uh, through the site plan process if they're done at PD, so, now's a good time, anything architecturally that we want changed, or any other kind of modifications?
I would love to see a lot of modifications to the architectural design, um, I, for example, that, uh, I, I was surprised that you guys put the, the back elevation, the 3D of the back elevation in the upper-left corner, and gave it such prominence, because that's pretty ugly. I don't like the fact that we have a big gable and two different materials going up, and I understand you probably did that for the sake of, um, getting enough brick, but I'd be more likely to grant a variance, if one was requested for the amount of brick, than to want to see that, and I would feel bad for the neighbors behind it, who would be looking at that back elevation. I also don't love the front elevations, uh, it looks like there's a lot of gables, and, and there are a lot of gables, but I don't like the way that brick, if you can zoom in on the frontal, the front 3D, um, the, that there's, the brick goes straight up, and then there's siding above it, and, and I understand, again, that's a structural, there's a structural reason for doing that, but, it's just not elegant, and that's what people are going to see when they come home. I also, um, from the front, the front elevation of that, the porch columns are, are asymmetrical and odd-looking, and they, they relate more to the, I guess, if you zoom out, Patrick, you can see the front, the flat front elevation. It's, it's just odd porch column widths, uh, I hope there's going to be a railing at those stairs that are off-center and tiny, but, um, it leaves a lot to be desired. Should I go on? I, I just, I don't love any of these, and I think they really need a lot of work, I also have a question about the exterior color options, the siding options, on that, there's, I guess it's page twelve, Patrick, in this packet, this piece of it, are those the only colors, because I know Patrick said many color options, and that's just four siding options and two brick options? So are there going to be more color options available, or is this it?
Yeah, as many, as many options as you would like, we would have at least six options, but, um-
I, I'd like to see-
We kept it as, as close as we can to River Hill, I mean, if you look at the design, it's, it's probably pretty close to River Hill.
Uh, I don't, I'm not going to be held to pass actions by this, by this commission, I, a lot of us weren't on the commission then, so I don't know what transpired then. I mean, it's got to be consistent, but, um-
Well, River Hill doesn't have brick, uh, I, I looked at, I, I looked at it earlier, and, uh, there is no brick on the homes in River Hill, um-
Well, we actually didn't want any brick, but it was a requirement by Patrick to have 50% brick, so we changed the design to fit the requirement.
Yeah, we had recommended meeting the 50% brick requirement because this was not technically in Cherry Hill Village. Now, that is another modification that can be discussed, especially if the architectural comments of the brick and the siding is presented pushes us more towards less brick or even no brick to be fully consistent with Cherry Hill Village, but that'll be part of the PD discussion that we have.
Okay. Yeah, I think.
I mean, I'm looking at pictures of River Hill, is it River Hill or River Mill?
River Hill.
River, it's River Hill Ridge. Payne Street.
I'm not forgetting Payne Street. And, well, I mean, I look at Payne Street, which is right at the entrance to the subdivision, and there's brick, but it's, it's at the band around the bottom.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I think the, the elevations in River Hill could certainly be better, too, but they're, they're a little more elegant than what I'm seeing in your packet. So, I would be inclined to, to not, to postpone this and ask for more information. I agree with the comments that my, my colleagues have made up here about the traffic, the concerns about the road, the concerns about the drainage. Does anyone want to make a motion?
So, if we're going to make a motion, we have to have the laundry list of things that we want to condition, I guess, or why we want to postpone, correct, Patrick?
Yeah, if there's a motion to postpone, there would just have to be a specific list as much as possible. So, if, if there are a lot of comments, or you refer back to other comments made during the meeting in terms of additional information needed for the planning commission to make a decision on the application. And then, any recommendations for plan changes if you have them?
All right, I'll give this a shot.
Thank you.
I move, I move to postpone action on the considered planned development district at Harvest Creek for parcel number 075-99-00, or 04-002 and 075-99-0005-000, otherwise known as 1205 South Ridge Road, for the following reasons. One, pending further information or results, our reporting from Wayne County on the action to be taken with Ridge Road and their, their requirements as it pertains to the curve and the entrance to the subdivision. Two, further information on the drainage and sewer of how, on the, from the property to the neighboring properties. Three, alterations to the elevations of the, of the proposed homes themselves, specifically addressing the materials to be used, including whether the percentage of brick needs to be altered, other types of materials that should be used, style and, and design of the, of the facades, and, what was the other thing?
Oh, the dead-end street?
Oh, and the, to address what could ultimately happen with the dead-end street, and if there are, if there are negotiations going on with the northern property owner, what the, if there can be any kind of likelihood of whether that can happen, or any provision being made for that dead-end street in the future. Adequate, Patrick?
Did we miss anything, Board?
No, I think that covers everything, and then with the comments on the architectural elevations, we'll just refer back to the comments that were made already, and we'll make sure those are included sufficiently in the minutes so that, what they're referred back to.
Oh, yeah, the other thing was that we want to see the traffic study that was supposedly submitted previously.
Always amend the motion, so sure.
Okay, I support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Egenberger. Any further discussion? Commissioner Egenberger, could you please call the vote?
Sure, Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger, yes. Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber.
Yes.
Great. We look forward to seeing more.
Thank you.
Thank you. I saw you take a picture of the packet. It's available online, just so you know. You can find those, yeah. Patrick can send you the link or give you the link for where you can find that. Yep, absolutely. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. All right.
Done? Let's go home.
I know, but you're able to see them. One.
You know this.
Okay, very good. All right, so, we have another item on the agenda for Canton Township Fire Station Number Four. This is old business, item number three, number 13X SPX 8189. We're considering site plan modification for parcel number 138-99-0009-702. The property is located at the southwest corner of Michigan Avenue and South Lily Road. Proposed site modifications for solar panels and fencing on a previously approved site plan. Patrick, tell us more.
Thank you. The planning staff will be presenting this item tonight because it's fairly minor. A few months ago, the planning commission approved Fire Station Number Four, and the site plan for that has, has been approved, and a lot of the fine-tuning of the designs is taking place. And one of the items that we're starting to get more detail on is the solar panel installation. And I can bring up the plan itself here. The fire station is proposed to have a robust solar panel installation and be powered predominantly by green energy. So, the fire station is proposed at the southwest corner of Michigan Avenue and Lily Road to the south. And south of the fire station itself is the proposed solar array. This is a larger solar array than would be typical of a home or even a commercial building. But in this case, because the building is predominantly powered by renewable energy, the solar array is larger. In the zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance limits the square footage of solar panels to 25% of the ground floor area of the principal building. And the reason is mostly for residential properties, is that if someone has a house and solar panels in their backyard, we wanted to have some proportionality between the panel coverage and the coverage of the building itself. And in this case, it's not a residential building because it's a, it's a public institution, safety building. And we consider also the impact of the panels on the surrounding area. Canton Township owns the property to the west, it's heavily wooded. The property to the south is a landfill, and the property to the east is industrial property. Along Lily Road itself, this portion of Lily Road is a dead end, and it dead ends at the landfill. So, in terms of impact on neighbors, visibility, a traffic, the visible impact is very low based on the surrounding area and the adjacent road. So, we're asking for modifications from a couple of different parts of the zoning ordinance. First is to allow solar panel coverage to exceed 25% of the ground floor area of the building. Another is to allow solar panels in a front yard area. Technically, the area that is between the front line of the building and Lily Road is technically front yard area. We recommend allowing placement in the front yard area. Alternatively, if the building or if the solar panels were moved westward, it would include more tree removal to the west. It would also require reconfiguration of the pond if those panels were moved westward. So, we recommend having them in this portion of the front yard that is shown. And finally, there's a surrounding fence of the solar panels for security purposes, and that fence is within the front yard setback along Lily Road. We recommend a modification to allow that fence in its proposed location for the same reasons with surrounding industrial areas, the dead end of Lily Road, the surrounding landfill, and the township-owned property buffering it from any other off-site users. So, with that, our recommendation is to approve the site plan modifications from Section 2.03I for the solar panels and Section 2.20 for the fence, both sections from the zoning ordinance, to allow the solar panels and surrounding fencing for Fire Station Number Four to be located in the front yard and in the required front yard setback along Lily Road, and to allow the area of the ground-mounted solar array to exceed 25% of the ground floor area of the principal building pursuant to Section 2.16B of the zoning ordinance, which allows the planning commission to recommend modifications from zoning ordinance standards for township-sponsored projects. And the last thing that I'll say about the solar panel limitation of 25% of the ground floor area, although that standard was originally intended mostly for residential installations, this will be something that we monitor in the future. If there's more demand for large solar panel installations for non-residential properties, we may recommend a future text amendment to allow some discretion on having larger solar panel areas for non-residential buildings, especially ones that are primarily powered by renewable energy. So, that concludes our staff report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Does anybody from the Board have an issue with this?
No.
What's the drainage situation?
But I feel like we, we agreed to something, Patrick, and now you're just coming back and saying, oops, didn't mean it.
So.
Which part?
The whole time, we talked about the fences, the solar.
I, I have a little issue. So, this, when you're driving down Lily, you're going to see a fence, a slotted fence covering this solar panel area, is that right? This looks like a jail right here to me, this fencing. And that's 10-foot high?
Not really Lily, it's sidebar.
The only reason you drive down Lily is to go to the dump?
No.
No, there's a couple businesses down there.
That's not this.
There's a couple businesses.
Oh, there's some other reasons to go down there?
Well, am I looking at this wrong door?
Forget Harvest or something is down there.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was flipped. I thought it was coming from, yeah. Still not a great fence.
But you can still, that fence sucks.
Still not a great fence.
Still not a great fence.
I like that.
Yeah, it's shown at six feet proposed. I think it may have been discussed previously about having, like, chain link, and we had looked for something that was a little more, more aesthetic than a typical chain link fence.
I would have done, like, a black ornamental, and it's as cheap as chain link, you know, and it looks better than this, but.
So, is that right? It's a 10-foot fence? Is that what you said?
Well, it said 10-foot gate. That's why I thought the whole fence was 10-foot, but maybe that was the opening I was reading.
Oh, that makes more sense.
Yeah, because I think the fence was shown at six, six-foot displayed, just as a security fence to protect the, the panels.
Not the greatest-looking fence.
Now, he's, now he's, he's toned it down a bit now.
We've beaten up on all the aesthetics tonight.
Well, I will comment, Patrick. I do, I agree that you should look at a text amendment for solar and commercial developments, especially if we want to see more commercial-type development using renewable energy. I think you will see more requests similar to this that require more area for solar panels and that sort of thing. Not that there's a lot of that kind of space available in Canton, but, and right now, it's probably not a big hassle to amend it like we are here tonight, but if it's something that can be addressed in the, in the text easily at the zoning ordinance, I think it's something that should be strongly considered, whether we see, actually see more right now or not.
I do think we also, I mean, we need to keep it safe. I don't know that a chain link fence would do that.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, I was just talking more about the concept.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with it. We need to amend it with a text, but Alan, would it, would it, I mean, if we're going to try and keep it safe?
I'm okay with it. I, yeah, I, I had this flipped. I thought this was coming from the neighborhoods to the north.
Oh, yeah.
Which everyone drives to access Michigan Avenue.
Yeah, okay.
But you're right, no one, it's an industrial area, yeah. But, yeah, you got to keep it secure. I get it.
It, it doesn't look as bad in, in a photo I found online.
That's it?
That's it. I mean, it's similar. It, there's V-grooves here.
Is that a prisoner in the back?
Yes.
Yes, you ordered a justice.
It is a prisoner. Is that Maxi Boys?
Oh, yeah. No, you're right, it doesn't look as bad.
Not bad.
Let the record reflect that Commissioner Egenberger talked Commissioner Cruz off the ledge.
Wait, I thought that was me.
Oh, miracles do happen sometimes.
Anybody else have anything? I'm entertaining motions.
I move to recommend approval of the site plan modifications from Section 2.03I, or is that one, at Section 2.20 of the zoning ordinance to allow the solar panels and surrounding fencing for Fire Station Number Four at 42445 Michigan Avenue on tax parcel 138-99-0009-702, to be located in the front yard and in the required front yard setback along Lily Road, and to allow the area of the ground-mounted solar array to exceed 25% of the ground floor area of the principal building pursuant to Section 2.16B of the zoning ordinance.
Support.
All right, I have a motion on the, on the table by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Janowski. Is there any further discussion? All right, Commissioner Egenberger, could you call the vote, please?
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger, yes. Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber.
Yes, thank you. Motion carries. Patrick, next steps.
Yeah, next steps. The project will proceed through its final designs and through the bidding process and everything. So, the more information that we get as it's being designed, if we see anything that, any new information, any modifications to the plans, if it doesn't comply with the ordinance, we will come back here. But we'll do everything we can along the way to get it compliant as those final designs get worked out. So, hopefully, it's, it's bid soon and under construction next year. We'll see.
Good, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is under new business, item number four, which is also known as 138-SPI-8300. This is Sing Executive Park Building Number Nine, where we're considering a site plan for parcel, parcels number 138-02-007-000, 138-00, I'm sorry, 138-02-0008-000, and part of parcel number 138-02-0000-000, maybe another zero or two. Property is located on the north side of Michigan Avenue between the South Morton-Taylor Road and South, between South Morton-Taylor Road and South Lily Road. Proposed new construction of a light industrial-use building. Patrick, tell us all about it, please.
Sure, thank you. So, the, the reason that the site plan is, before the planning commission, is that there are certain types of site plans that are industrial that can be approved administratively by staff, and we've got three of them this evening. And for, for similar reasons, the, this particular site plan and the other site plans we'll review this evening are before the planning commission. And that is, if there's an industrial site plan, if there's anything that requires a special use, a variance. a special use, a variance, or any discretionary decision, then the site plan for an industrial use goes through Planning Commission and the board. So in this case, there are, there was a variance that was approved last week for the location of the dumpster enclosures, which I'll get into in a few moments, and the other proposed, well, one was variance, one is a discretionary decision that's proposed to reduce the brick requirement for the office portion of the building. And that's a fairly common modification that we're seeing requested of industrial buildings for a number of different reasons. In this case, for Sing Executive Park, all of the buildings, they don't have the traditional brick on the office portions. What they have is a split-face block that's integrally colored, and it's pretty consistent throughout the entire buildings. The office areas of those buildings are distinguished by the glass there, so when we get into some of the elevations of this building, you'll kind of see what their intent is, and it looks very similar to a lot of the other buildings in Sing Executive Park. So that's why we're before the Planning Commission with this application. The applicant is proposing a single industrial building of about 100,000 square feet in Sing Executive Park. It's located just east of the ITC corridor and just west of Lilly Road and just south of the Rouge River along Michigan Avenue. Sing Executive Park currently consists of five buildings, and the subject site for this application was originally planned for two buildings, and on this aerial map, you can see two boxes outlined. Those are actually units that are part of the business condominium that is there. So these two boxes are currently Units Seven and Eight, so to combine them to create one unit, that would be Unit Nine, and Units Seven and Eight would be repaired. So even though the application is Sing Building Number Nine, it's not actually the ninth building, it's just the building that would go on the ninth lot. It's just a way of numbering condos and to keep track of the units as we go forward. The proposed building is a spec building. There's no end user, and the end user could also be, could be multiple users as well. On the screen here is the proposed plan layout in relation to the entire park. So in orange here is the proposed building, and it's kind of a U shape, and the loading areas are on the inside of the U. What's unique about this site is that there are four front yards. There's the main front yard along Michigan Avenue, but then Executive Drive goes along the other three sides. So the configuration works really well for an industrial park, but from a technical side of the zoning ordinance, it creates three front, or four front yards. So loading can only be done in a side or rear yard, and because the loading is on the inside of the U shape, it's technically in a side or rear yard, so the loading area is conforming. The dumpster enclosure area that's located farther to the north is technically in a front yard, and last Thursday evening at the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, the ZBA approved a variance to allow the proposed dumpster enclosure to be located in a front yard area. This dumpster enclosure on the north side of the site, the enclosures will open to the south, so someone who is along Executive Drive to the north will only see the wall of the dumpster enclosure with the doors facing south. Even if the doors are open, the lines of sight are gonna be very limited in terms of who can see the dumpster doors open, so the visual impact of the dumpster location on the north side of the site is pretty minimal. And in the landscape plan, it does show additional trees and screening along those, along those walls to further screen the dumpster area. The proposed site has two access points to the west, two access points to the east. There are no additional curb cuts on Michigan Avenue, so all the access points will be from Executive Drive, which is the way that it was intended back when the industrial park was approved back in 1999. The building has sufficient parking on the southeast and north sides of the building. Because it's a spec building, we don't yet know what the final parking calculation will be, but if for some reason there was additional parking needed for a future user, there are a few spots adjacent to the parking area rows where additional spaces could be put, maybe north of the building, maybe south of the Southern Drive, but in most cases with industrial buildings, we usually find that there's an overabundance of parking rather than a shortage of parking. But that's something that we'll know in the future, once the future users are known. The application includes a landscape plan that includes frontage landscaping along Executive Drive, Michigan Avenue, and includes the parking lot landscaping, foundation landscaping. With the proposed use, the zoning district is light industrial research, and it includes a number of different uses like light manufacturing, assembly, research, research and design centers, testing centers, professional office buildings, programming, software development, data centers. Those are permitted uses in the LIR zoning district. If the proposed use is a warehousing and material distribution center as a primary use, that use is a special land use in the LIR zoning district, and if there's a future user that has that use as a principal use, that being warehousing and distribution, then the user would have to file a special land use application for that use in the future if that's the use that's proposed. The current building and layout is designed to meet all the required setbacks for front side and rear yards. Let's see, we've gone over the parking and loading. The architecture, the proposed building will be just over 82% of integrally colored CMU block, most of which is split-face block. Some of it has single scorer as well along the wainscote and the access bands. And almost 14% of the building will be glass, which is concentrated along the south side of the building and along the southern portions of the building on the east and west side. So when you're driving down Michigan Avenue, you'll be able to see that glass, so it'll look more than 14% glass, just because it's concentrated along those sides that are gonna be the most visible from not just Michigan Avenue, but for drivers that enter Executive Drive on the east or the west. So that material by itself does meet the industrial standards. However, Section 26.06 footnote G of the ordinance requires that an office portion of an industrial warehouse building be 75% face brick, jumbo brick, and/or structural brick units. The office portions of the building do not include that required material, but they do include a lot of glass to distinguish it from the more industrial warehouse portions of the building. The proposed architectural style is similar to the existing materials on the other five buildings in Sing Executive Park, none of which meet that 75% brick requirement for those office portions. And Section 26.06 footnote H allows the Planning Commission to approve modifications to the material standards in order to achieve a specific architectural objective as demonstrated by the project sponsor in meeting the overall development objectives of the community. Based on the character of the existing five buildings in the Sing Executive Park and the proposed architectural consistency with those buildings, we recommend approval of the modification as proposed on the plans. Also, because the building is more of a spec building, we don't know where the future location of the office areas will be, so sometimes those office areas on a spec building are kind of a moving target. So to be able to get 75% brick on the office portions, it's mostly unknown when it's a spec building, or it's a building where it could have multiple users, or it could turn over use in the future. I think that covers all of our major comments. We have other comments related to lighting and access and parking that are in the staff report, but there's compliance there. So our recommendation is approval of the site plan for Sing Executive Park Building Number Nine on the subject parcels, subject to the following three conditions. First, per Section 26.06 footnote H, to approve a modification from the 75% brick requirement for the office portions of the industrial buildings. Second, per Section 5.07, to approve a modification from the foundation landscape requirements to allow 11 of the foundation trees to be evergreen, and to allow nine of the foundation trees to be located along the frontage of the site. And third, compliance with all state, county, and township requirements. And regarding the landscaping, there is foundation landscaping against all sides of the building, but with the locations of where to put trees and how they interface with the building, the windows, the parking, it gets pretty dense with the required foundation trees. So the applicant is proposed to still have the same number of foundation trees, but to allow, in those foundation trees, they have to be ornamental. The applicant proposes to have 11 of those required foundation trees to be evergreen to provide some better screening in some areas, and to allow nine of those foundation trees to be located along a frontage instead of alongside the building. So the building still looks nice with plenty of ornamental trees against it, it's just some of those other foundation trees are located elsewhere and are evergreen, so it'll provide a little bit more buffering, it'll allow the trees to be spread out amongst the site a little bit better than the way the ordinance is written. So that concludes our staff report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project sponsor here? Would you like to add anything to what Patrick said? Oh, go ahead, yeah.
Hi, good evening. My name is Matt DeLapp. I'm with Sing Development, located at 7125 Orchard Lake Road, Suite 200, West Bloomfield, Michigan. I know you have other items to get to, so I want to be aware of that, respect your time, and Patrick did a very, very thorough job. I very much appreciate that, going through everything, so I just wanted to say we're looking forward to starting another project here in Canton. Canton's proven to be an excellent partner for us throughout the years through multiple developments, whether it is these commercial projects or single-family, multifamily, residential. So we're looking forward to further that commitment. And then, yeah, just on the modification request for the elevations, our intent really is just to match what's there. This is the last building, it's the sixth building in the Executive Park, and we think the intent of the ordinance is to have congruity with the rest of the development, and that's really our goal. And specifically for the facade of the building, in order to meet that percentage, we'd actually have to remove windows and put more masonry in there, and we think the windows actually have a greater aesthetic effect, especially since you're gonna be driving down Michigan Avenue, that's where all the windows are located on the front office there. So that's all I had to add to what Patrick had to say, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you guys might have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. I'm gonna start down with Brian at the other end this time.
No objections, ma'am chair.
None from me either.
Eggenberger?
No concerns.
Or Weber?
I have no concern, just a curiosity or anything else. Is there a reason why you're proposing to go to one building now as opposed to, and I know you, I know there's no tenant in mind yet, but...
Yeah, there's, we feel there's a demand for a larger-sized building, 100,000 square foot compared to 250,000 square foot, but again, we don't have a tenant set in stone, so we're kind of trying to design it in a way that, you know, maybe in the long run it could be split into two, just to kind of leave open that possibility.
Thank you. I'm loving Berlin.
Commissioner Cruz?
Is this site master plan with detention already? Or...
Yes. Yeah, we're tied into the approved detention plan.
So would you have to submit to the county?
Yes, I believe that's the case.
Yeah, the, because of the area of the development, it would have to go to Wayne County, and what Wayne County would do is they would look at the existing storm system, and if it's sufficient, then I think it would be permitted, but if there's any upgrades or if there's been any changes to the ordinance that require any changes to the stormwater facilities, that would have to be addressed.
I'm gonna alert you that the rules have changed, and the way that looks, you're undersized with detention. You may, you may be grandfathered in from the previous development, but it's just a heads-up that they may make you do other storm improvements. Also too, just note that Wayne County uses NAVD-88 datum. This has NGVD-29. All the FEMA maps and everything is NAVD-88. That's something that if you submit to them, they're gonna require, just a heads-up.
Okay.
That's all I got.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Janowski? I have no issues as well, so, looks good. Anybody wanna make a motion?
Oh.
Yeah, turn the page. We're all waiting with bated breath.
Building number nine on parcels 138-02-0007-00, comma, 138-02-008-000, and part of 138-02-000-000, subject on the following conditions. One, per Section 26.06 footnote H, to approve a modification from the 75% brick requirement for the portion of the industrial, office portions of the industrial buildings. Per Section 5.07, to approve a modification from the foundation landscape requirements to allow 11 of the foundation trees to be evergreen, and to allow nine of the foundation trees to be located along the frontage of the site. And, three, compliance with all state, county, and township requirements.
Thank you. Support? Okay, awesome. So we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Janowski and support by Commissioner Eggenberger. Any further discussion? Commissioner Eggenberger, could you please call the vote?
Sure. Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger? Yes. Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner, or the motion carries, so Patrick, next steps?
Next steps is that this will proceed to the Board of Trustees. I don't think there are any plan revisions, so it'll probably be on their next available agenda, which will most likely be December 10th.
Thank you.
And we'll confirm that date with the applicant.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Great. Next item on our agenda. We are looking at all the industrial developments this evening. It's a change from all the, all of the, no, all of the car washes and storage buildings.
Chicken restaurants.
We've seen, yes, chicken restaurants. All right, so our next item is 136-SPI-7624. That is Prospect Hill Industrial Park. We're considering a site plan for parcel, I'm just gonna say said parcels, which are also known as 5505 South Sheldon Road. This property is located on the east side of Sheldon Road between Michigan Ave. and Yoast Road. The proposed, it's proposed new construction of two light industrial-use buildings. Patrick, tell us all about it, please.
Sure. As you noted, the site is on the east side of South Sheldon Road, south of Michigan Avenue, north of Yoast Road, so it's predominantly an industrial area there, and there are three parcels here shown on the site here that are highlighted, and there's an existing building closer to the road that is proposed to remain, and there are two new buildings that are proposed. So I'll bring up the site plan itself. So we've got the survey, there's tree survey, and... There we go. So the main industrial building will be farther setback from the road. That will be about 56,000 square feet, and there will be another industrial building built just south of the existing building, and that will front Sheldon Road, that will be smaller, that'll be about 14,400 square feet. And the development will be on the western two-thirds of the site, the eastern roughly third of the site. There are existing wetlands in this area that will be preserved, and there's also a lot of trees in the area on the east side that will also be preserved. The proposed stormwater detention is proposed to be an underground system, and I think it's proposed outlet to the wetland area. The specific uses of the industrial buildings or future users are currently unknown. It's designed as a multi-tenant industrial building, so there could be a number of different uses, could be a contractor's establishment, could be warehousing. The zoning is LI, light industrial, so warehousing and distribution are permitted uses, or it could be uses where there could be one user occupying multiple spaces that are shown. There are several loading spaces adjacent to the sides of the larger building and the rear of the smaller building fronting the road. And like with the previous application, one of the reasons that this application is with the Planning Commission is that there's a proposed modification from the brick requirement... with the planning commission is that there's a proposed modification from the brick requirement of the office portion of the buildings. And as we'll see in some of the elevations, what's proposed is probably a little bit nicer and probably a little bit easier to predict in terms of future users by not having to worry so much about getting 75% on what might be an unknown office area in the future and then dispersing the brick throughout more areas of the building. Before getting into that, just a little bit about the site. The plans illustrate compliance with all the setback requirements for front yard, side yard, rear yard setback, for max building height. All the standards of the LI district are met in terms of setback, lot, building height. For the traffic impact and access management, there's proposed to be one entrance. It's an existing entrance off of South Sheldon, but it'll be upgraded. And there'll be one entrance into the site, and all the traffic will go in and out through that site, so there won't be multiple curb cuts. The entrance will most likely be widened. It'll also be paved and curbed. There's proposed to be sidewalk along the frontage from the entire frontage along South Sheldon Road. And then there's also sidewalk proposed from the Sheldon Road sidewalk to the main building on the site. There are four dumpster enclosures dispersed throughout the site. They're all located in the rear yard and designed to be conforming. The parking of the site is, there are 206 parking spaces proposed, and based on the floor area, the 206 parking spaces are within the allowable limit based on a multi-tenant industrial building, which this is sized for. And there are plenty of areas between the boundary of the parking lot and the buildings for truck circulation. So if some of these users have large trucks, large equipment vehicles, trailers, things like that, there's plenty of area to maneuver. For the architecture, the two proposed buildings will range between 16 and 23% brick, 35% to 38% block, which is a mix of a split face and a smooth-faced CMU block, and 30 to 33% metal siding, and between 10 to 16% doors and windows. All of those materials are within the limits that are allowed in Section 26.06 for an industrial building. However, Section 26.06 footnote G requires the office portion to have 75% face brick, jumbo brick, or structural brick units. The office portions of the spec buildings are less than 75% brick because the brick areas are dispersed throughout the entire length of the building, which makes the overall building more attractive. Plus, the future office areas are unknown. They are sketched on the building for the sake of having a workable floor plan. But in reality, if there is one user with multiple areas, or they have an office located somewhere else, then the material standards would be dictating an interior floor plan, which doesn't really work for an industrial spec building or a building that could be turning over users or units being moved over time. So if, if all the brick on the two buildings were concentrated only in the office area shown on the plan, then the 75% brick requirement could be met. It'd beat the technical standards, but it would be a less attractive building. So therefore, we recommend approval of the modification for that 75% brick for the office area and instead have that brick that's shown on the plans to be dispersed throughout the building as shown. For the next comments for landscaping, the landscaping complies with the requirements of the zoning ordinance for the frontage landscaping along Sheldon Road, the parking lot landscaping, the building foundation landscaping, and the general site landscaping. Our only comment on the landscaping is the mechanical equipment has to be screened on at least three sides by evergreens, and the plans note that requirement. It just, the note has to be revised to say it's evergreen screening, so it's a very minor note. Also, the site plan complies with the tree removal and replacement requirements of Article 5A of the zoning ordinance. There is no removal of any landmark trees, and mitigation is not required based on the proposed tree removal because there's a lot of preservation on the east side of the site. For natural features, the site has a large wooded wetland area on the east side that will be preserved, and the area around the remaining wetland will have the 25%, or the 25-foot buffer required by the zoning ordinance. There's a minimum 25-foot buffer from the boundary of a wetland area, and the setback area on the east side far exceeds that setback. The size of the preserved wetland on the east side of the site is just over one and a half acres, and it connects to a larger wetland area to the north and south. There are wetlands in the central and the western part of the site on the south side that will be filled in accordance with a permit that has been issued by Eagle. And as we noted, the stormwater management system will be underground and proposed outlet to the west, or the wetland on the east side of the site. And then finally, the lighting is designed to comply with the zoning ordinance, so we don't have any concerns with that. So staff's recommendation is approval of the site plan for the Prospect Hill Industrial Park on the subject parcels, subject to the following four conditions. First, per Section 26.06 footnote H, to approve a modification from the 75% brick requirement for the office portions of the industrial buildings as shown on the plans. Second, screening the ground mechanical equipment with evergreens pursuant to Section 5.02D2 of the zoning ordinance. Third, that the three parcels be combined into a single parcel. And fourth, compliance with all state, county, and township requirements. That concludes our staff report, and be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project sponsor here? All right, would you like to come up and state your name and address for the record and tell us anything else we need to know?
My name is Patrick Seeloff. Address, 8400 Cherry Hill, live in Superior Township, but I also have a building at 5781 South Sheldon. I own the corner, two buildings. These buildings that we're proposing to build would pretty much mirror the same look that I did 25 years ago when I built at the corner there of Sheldon and Yoast.
Okay.
I do have tenant use for the 14. I know he said it's more of a spec. It's just taken a while to get this going, so I've lost a tenant. I have a couple tenants that are still on board. I have a tenant that's in the, in the actual building of 5505 that doesn't want more space. Will probably take the 14,000 square feet, that whole building up front. I'm probably going to take 20,000, 25,000 of the back building. And I have another tenant that's been in and out only because we haven't been able to get this thing, you know, off the ground. So it's hard to book somebody when you don't have an end date to it.
Very good, thank you.
Okay.
From the commission, have any questions or concerns? I'm just going to throw it open.
Yeah. What's going on? Yeah. This, this area here, and here? Yeah, and it's, 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 it would just, we basically designed this whole thing to be able to fit truck and trailer, to be able to turn around, so that you would actually have access, and it was, it would give allowable room for, you know, equipment to be able to be pulled in and out. I mean, I've been, I've been in the building for 20, since 2000, so 24 years, you know, and I have over 50 vehicles. So it'd be virtually impossible to go any smaller in the, in the blacktop areas. I don't see, I don't see, it wouldn't work for, you know, making the radiuses and turning and being able to even get into the overhead doors if I was to access, you know.
I just have one question. Your sanitary line going right through the wetland, how are you, do you have a permit from Eagle to allow that?
We, we worked with Eagle. We, so there's two parts to this. One, you already have a sanitary line going through the wetland. The building's existing. The building that I bought back in 17 or 18 has had the sanitary line there since they built the building in 99 or, you know, or so, 98, 99.
Not the question, how are you getting to there?
What's that?
You're plowing through the wetland to get to there? That's the question.
No, we could board, we can board a line to get through it.
Okay, so that's the answer?
Yeah, I didn't know that's how you asked it, though. I thought you said, how, how is the line getting there from the point A to point B?
Yeah, your proposed sanitary is going through the wetland to get to the existing.
It could be, it could be board, yes. Right? Go ahead. This is Scott.
My name is Scott Schumacher. I'm with GLA Surveyors and Engineers in Plymouth, Michigan. We are putting a new sanitary line in. The, the existing building is being utilized with a two-inch force main. It appears that it was not put in per the original design back in, I believe, 2010 when this building went in. Because of the new function and everything, we've designed a new sanitary. We've moved it, actually it goes on the north side of the building.
Sheet C13 is what I was looking at. Ooh, geez, sorry.
We're all awake now.
Okay, so this is, this has been revised since the initial law submitted to DRC. I've worked with engineering.
What we've done is we've pushed Manhole G across, and we've come all the way over to here, so all the way back down to the wetland, to here, to how we can get it.
Okay. Could you repeat?
Can you go back to the mic and say that again?
Yeah, just repeat that for the mic.
So we're going to push Manhole G farther to the northeast, and then we're going to go to the, basically, the, to minimize any impact on the wetland, and we'll board that. That won't be an open cut.
That's all I got. Anything else?
We had, I just wanted to add this. We, we have an Eagle permit for the wetland. We've already gone through all the mitigation with Eagle. We've, we've done all that, that process has been completed.
No, we have plans in with Eagle for that since we've made that change. Yes.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll do it. I move to recommend approval of the site plan for Prospect Hill Industrial Park site plan on parcels number 136-99-0004-700, 136-99-0005-000, and 136-99-0006-000 at 5505 through 5781 South Sheldon Road, subject to the following conditions. One, per Section 26.06 footnote H, to approve a modification from the 75% brick requirement for the office portions of the industrial building as shown on the plans. Two, screening the ground mechanical equipment with evergreens pursuant to Section 5.02D2 of the zoning ordinance. Three, have the three parcels be combined into a single parcel and four, compliance with all state, county, and township requirements.
Support. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Lee. Is there any further discussion? Great, Commissioner Eganberger, please call the vote.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Eganberger, yes. Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber.
Yes. All right, motion carries. Next steps, Patrick.
Like with the previous application, this will proceed to the Township Board of Trustees, and the only modification is minor with the equipment screening. So we think probably the next available meeting agenda, most likely December 10th, but we'll confirm that with the applicant.
Excuse me. All right, good luck, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is item number 6, 003-SPI-5527, Market Street Industrial Development, where we're considering site plan for parcel number 003-99-0001-001. The property is located on the north end of Market Street, which is north of Copernick Road and west of North Hagerty. Proposed new construction of four light industrial use buildings. Patrick?
Thank you. So Market Street is located in the northeast part of the community, so it's west of Hagerty Road here, and then it's north of Copernick. And there's an industrial subdivision roads that go through it. Market Street goes to the north and south, and Capital Ave. goes to east and west. So it's a predominantly industrial area, and then Market Street dead ends on the north side, and then there's two large vacant parcels to the north that are zoned light industrial. And the applicant proposes on the site that's highlighted in the plan to construct four industrial buildings on the north end of Market Street. Market Street is a private industrial subdivision street, and so that street will be extended, and it's proposed to stub onto the north side, so that if the property to the north is developed, there would be a stub access to Market Street continuing through the subject parcel. There are two buildings on the west side of Market Street. They will be just over 19,000 square feet each, and two buildings on the east side of Market Street will be just over 32,000 square feet each. The specific users of the industrial buildings are currently unknown. The subject site is zoned LI light industrial, and it allows for warehousing and distribution, light manufacturing, research development, things of that nature. The overall site is roughly eight acres. For the schedule of regulations, the plans submitted illustrate that all four buildings comply with the requirements for the lot width, front yard setback, rear yard setback, side yard setbacks, and building heights. The areas that are shown in the plan, they may eventually be converted to like a condominium type of development where the buildings are the actual units. So if the site plan is approved and there's a condominium development, there would have to be a future application for a condominium, which is fairly straightforward. It's just a way of laying out property. We're dealing mostly with the use at the site plan stage. But if it is converted to a condominium, basically the units would, the units would be the buildings, the boxes, similar to the way that Singh Executive Park is laid out. And then the parking areas, they would either be limited common elements for the use of the building or general common elements for use of everybody in the park. The way that the four buildings are laid out, it's fairly unique. The loading spaces are technically in a side yard, and this configuration can also be seen elsewhere on Market Street, where the loading doors do face the road, but the space itself is in a side yard because that door is recessed. And it's also helpful that the driveways are across the street from each other, as we see on a lot of industrial subdivision streets. For trucks that back into a space, a lot of times they rely on a driveway across the street in order to make that maneuver. So in this case, the alignment is a good thing, where if there's a truck backing up to a western building, they'll be able to go forward into the drive of one of the eastern buildings, probably not all the way up the drive, but at least some use of the drive in order to back the truck in. They may be able to do it just from Market Street, but having a drive across the street that's part of the same park is helpful as well. So in all cases, those loading areas are technically in a side yard, so they comply with the zoning ordinance. Stormwater management is accommodated with two ponds in the far west side of the site. So on the western buildings, their rear yard is occupied with the ponds. With the eastern buildings, those buildings are a little bit larger because there's no pond, but there is an access that goes along the backside of the building, so there's, there's one looped access. Each one of the uses will have its own dedicated driveway, both for passenger vehicles and for loading vehicles. So along this stretch of Market Street, there's going to be four curb cuts on each side of the road, depending on if it's which building it is and whether it's a passenger vehicle or a loading vehicle. The parking is designed to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The future users are unknown, so it's difficult to know what exactly the future parking demand will be. But if there is an overage on parking, I think with some of the adjacent users and being part of the same park, there's an opportunity to share parking if needed. But if... Um, but if there's a modification necessary for the minimum parking in the future, um, the Planning Commission can consider a modification at a future date once the future users are known. Um, for the architecture, similar to the previous two industrial applications, um, there's a modification requested for the brick requirement, um, of Section Twenty-Six Point Zero Six for the office portion of the buildings. Uh, the proposed buildings will range between eighty percent and about eighty-four percent, um, masonry, which is integrally colored split face CMU block and half-high CMU block. Uh, the remainder of the buildings will be metal paneling and windows. Um, so overall, those proposed materials do comply with the industrial, uh, standards for architecture in Section Twenty-Six Point Zero Six of the zoning ordinance. However, that office portion is required to have seventy-five percent face brick and being spec buildings, um, the office area is largely unknown. Um, but similar to the other applications, there is some prominence there along what is considered the office area or the main entrance area with the use of metal and glass and, um, the entranceway. Um, so the office portions of the buildings include less than seventy-five percent, um, half-high CMU block. Um, the, uh, calculations show that Building A has, um, just under fifty percent. Um, B and C have just under fifty percent. Those are in the high forty percents. And then Building D has just over thirty-nine percent of the, uh, half-high CMU, which does count as brick, uh, for industrial properties. The office facades of these buildings include a lot of glass and metal paneling to distinguish them from the other portions of the building that are more industrial warehouse in nature. Um, so because Section Twenty-Six Point Zero Six Footnote H of the zoning ordinance allows the Planning Commission to approve modifications, um, of the material standards, um, we recommend, um, approval of that modification based on the character of the proposed buildings within the intended development on that north side of Market Street. Um, for the landscaping and screening, the landscaping is designed to comply with the front inch landscaping, uh, the parking lot landscaping, the building foundation landscaping, uh, the detention pond landscaping, and general site landscaping. Um, the mechanical equipment is also shown as being screened, um, by Evergreens on the ground. And also the site plan is designed to comply with the tree removal and replacement standards of Article Five A of the zoning ordinance. Section Twenty-Six, or Section Two Point Twenty-Six of the zoning ordinance requires screening of rooftop mechanical equipment, um, from view of any adjacent roads or property. And the building elevations show the required screening on three sides. Um, our recommendation is that the rooftop screening be shown on four sides because the final locations are not yet known and the lines of sight could make the equipment visible from surrounding properties. Um, once the final locations of the rooftop equipment are known during the building review process, uh, during that permit review process, we can make administrative determinations on lines of sight and the specific screening requirements pursuant to Section Two Point Twenty-Six. Um, there are, um, four dumpster enclosures, one for each of the buildings. Um, they're located in the rear of each site and they're designed to comply with the ordinance. And, uh, also the, uh, lighting and signage is designed to comply. There are no signage details yet, but that can be reviewed administratively by the building division, once the users are known and once their sign, uh, needs are, are displayed. Um, so with that, um, our staff's recommendation is approval of the site plan for Market Street Industrial Development, uh, subject to the following five conditions. Um, first is a separate condominium application is required if the site is developed as an industrial condominium. Uh, second, per Section Twenty-Six Point Zero Six Footnote H, to approve a modification from the seventy-five percent brick requirement for the office portions of the industrial buildings, um, as stated. Third, uh, screening the ground mechanical equipment with Evergreens pursuant to Section Five Point Zero Two D, two of the zoning ordinance. Uh, four, screening the rooftop mechanical equipment pursuant to Section Two Point Twenty-Six of the zoning ordinance. And fifth, compliance with all state, county, and township requirements. Uh, that concludes our staff analysis and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Uh, is the project sponsor here? Anything to add to what Patrick said?
Uh, good evening. Uh, Tom Crable, seven five zero nine Vreeland Roads Superior Township. Good evening, Commissioners, Madam Chair. Development Department, thank you, Patrick, for putting together a nice proposal here. We thank you all for hearing our proposed development here. Um, I don't, um, well, that, I, I guess the only thing that, uh, you know, I would add and, and Patrick really covered it, but the, uh, you know, we, we've, we've been in this business for a while. Uh, we're, our job is to be a little better than everybody else. Uh, we think that we've put together a very nice elevation, uh, that e- each building is very similar with its metal and, but there's going to be some, uh, uh, some wood textured metal products, uh, with the combination of the colored masonry. Uh, we, we, you know, we're pretty proud of the, what we've done here and we think that it's gonna be a great improvement to the existing park. And I, regarding screening and, and, uh, you know, some additional landscaping, you know, obviously no problem doing that. I think maybe it wasn't specified on the plan because we weren't exactly sure where the mechani- if there would be any mechanical equipment on the roof. And, uh, if so, certainly we have no problem working with, uh, you know, building or planning to comply with that, so. Yeah, I don't really have anything else.
Anybody from the, you know, Janowski, or Janowski would you like to? Commissioner Cruz? Weber?
I have nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Uh, I have no concerns, except maybe, Patrick, we should talk about changing the brick requirements or we're not doing this every time?
Yeah, we, we've had a number of discussions among staff in terms of how to, uh, approach that. But that is one of, one of the things that we're planning to come to the Planning Commission with, with a text amendment on, uh, not just for industrial buildings, but architectural standards in general that we run into with a lot of different projects. Um, with some of the amendments we have now, um, it, it'll probably be a few months, but it's on the docket.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee? Okay, Commissioner Watkins?
No objections, Madam Chair.
I have to compliment you on the elevations too. I think they look really nice, so.
Thank you, yeah, we were a little surprised when we learned that it, it wasn't conforming. And the only thing that I could come up with, and maybe, Patrick, I don't know if you'd agree with this, but a lot of buildings, uh, i- in that area were pre-engineered buildings. So, you know, we can thank Mr. Pacheco for that. Uh, and, and to distinguish the office from the pre-engineered box, I, you know, I think it made sense, certainly at the time, to, you know, require more brick. In this particular case, we have an entire building that's, you know, decorative masonry and we're trying to distinguish the office by flipping it around and using architectural metal panels and, and, so, uh, I don't know how you put that in a zoning ordinance, but, you know, that, that was my thought, was that that probably was where that came from. But we're very happy that you agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to make a motion? Go ahead.
Of the site plan, Market Street Industrial Development, um, parcel number zero zero three ninety-nine dash zero 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 one dash zero zero one, subject to the following conditions. One, a separate condominium application is required if the site is developed as an industrial condominium. Two, per Section Twenty-Six Point Zero Six Footnote H, to approve modification that, from the seventy-five percent brick requirement for the office portions of the industrial building as follows. Forty-eight point nine percent for Building A, forty-nine percent for Building B, forty-seven point eight for Building C, and finally thirty-nine point four for Building D. Number three, screening the ground mechanical equipment with Evergreens pursuant to Section Five Point Zero Two D, two of the zoning ordinance. Number four, screening the rooftop mechanical equipment pursuant to Section Two Point Two Six of the zoning ordinance and compliance with all state, county, and township requirements.
Thank you.
Second.
Great, we have a motion on the table by Commissioner Janowski and support by Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion? Commissioner Egenberger, could you call the vote, please?
Sure, Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger? Yes. Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber?
Yes, motion carries. Patrick, next steps?
Uh, yeah, like the other ones, um, this will go to the Township Board of Trustees, most likely December tenth. Any changes are relatively minor, so we can proceed with, with the materials to the board. So having those all at once probably a good, good way to approach it, especially since we're all talking about the same modification of the ordinance, so.
Good, thank you. Good luck to you, sir.
All right, thank you.
I've got a total, sir, I got a totally random question for you. Have you ever been told you look like Bill Belichick? Just need a Patriots hoodie.
Thank you.
Great, awesome. And we have one final item, I'm hoping Aaron's gonna talk about this one. No? You're just here, you're just here because you want to be here?
There's nothing fun to talk about, sir.
He has nothing fun to talk about. So, yes, Patrick, tell us all about the Planning Commission meeting schedule for twenty twenty-five. We've been waiting with bated breath.
Oh, can we just, for a minute before he does this, you said December tenth was the next possible meeting? I think that's a Tuesday.
A board meeting.
Board meeting.
Oh, the board meeting, okay, never mind.
It'd mean scary, yeah.
Pay attention, pay attention. Okay, Patrick, tell us all about the Planning Commission's schedule.
Uh, well, every year we, uh, we have the schedule that, uh, is reviewed usually in November for the following year. There's nothing too different about the schedule that's proposed, um, than it has been in the previous year or two. We have the proposed regular meetings on the first Monday, uh, except when there's a holiday. And then the proposed work session on the third Monday unless there's a holiday, in which case, in both cases, we just move it to the following Monday. Um, there may be some adjustments throughout the year, uh, here and there, just depending on how schedules line up. And with no elections planned in twenty twenty-five, it makes it a little bit cleaner, um, than it was in twenty twenty-four when we had three elections. So, um, yeah, this is the proposed schedule for twenty twenty-five and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the schedule. The Township Board formally approves the schedule, so if it's recommended by the Planning Commission, it'll go to the Board of Trustees on the December, um, actually, this one may be on next Tuesday's agenda, the twenty-sixth.
Do you anticipate all the work sessions since we'll be through the master plan, probably what, first, well, end of first quarter, early second quarter? And the reason I ask is it seemed like the first number of years that I've been on the commission, we really didn't have the second meeting each month until we got into the master plan.
Right, yeah.
Well, um, we'll be proceeding through a lot of different zoning ordinance amendment proposals where we can combine that on a business meeting. If we're light on agenda items, we can try to save ourselves some time.
I, I'm just curious, I didn't, I'm not poo-pooing or anything like that, I'm just curious.
Like you're poo-pooing. We're not normal people.
We're all, we're all saying the same thing, if we could be more efficient in this, in the execution of this and skip that.
But we've also told Patrick, we don't want a bunch of ordinance amendments or master plan stuff on nights when we have big agendas for regular stuff.
We'll walk a fine line.
Well, we did say as efficient as possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, so realistically, we may, we may, uh, cancel some of those work sessions if we're either between amendment proposals or if we don't have much to make a meeting worthwhile, we may, you know, push something off to the following month or put it onto a regular meeting if there's an opening. But we at least want to pencil those in, so we have them on the calendar, we have a room reserved, et cetera.
Planned.
We also talked a little bit about some of them starting at six, like the work sessions. Is that not possible? I know Commissioner Janowski had some scheduling issues with that, so.
Alan, you do too, don't you, at six o'clock?
No, I don't.
Oh, I, I thought you did.
I'm usually late to those.
Yeah.
But I, I always vote for it, but I'm late to them.
You know, it, it is a struggle, but if I'm the only person that's having that struggle, I can manage to work things out most of the time. And I do have opportunities with my schedule at this point in time. So I can't predict that far in advance, but if everybody wants to go at six, I'll do what I can do my best.
It is nice to start at six because it's already like nine-thirty now, so.
Are we talking six for work sessions or all meetings?
I mean, I would love all meetings, but.
I could only do work sessions.
Work, work sessions, okay.
Okay, we can make that distinction.
Okay.
Remind us if you'd.
Is, is everyone else okay with that?
Or I'll be yours.
Not the regular meetings, no, because I wouldn't be able to make it.
Okay. Okay.
And then, uh, while we're on the topic, we have, um, next month, we have a regular meeting on December second and then we have a work session on December sixteenth. Um, on the sixteenth, do we want that work session at six o'clock?
Aaron's, Aaron's suggesting that we all nod.
We, we may need it for the master plan?
Yeah.
Okay, so are we saying it's on the sixteenth?
Six o'clock? Perfect.
And then the regular meeting is still on the second at seven PM? Yep.
Yes, in big capital, bold letters.
Aaron, you're gonna let us know where we're at with our continuing education?
Yes, I, I will send you all out an email, uh, by the end of the week, letting you know where you all are with that.
Actually, point of order on that, I think we want to close this with a motion before we go.
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
No worries, a motion to accept the twenty twenty-five meeting schedule, um, as, as, as listed.
And could, could you please clarify who made that motion? Because I didn't even hear it.
I was making the motion.
Oh, okay. Do we have a support? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Lee to accept the, um, twenty twenty-five schedule as amended with the six o'clock work sessions?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right.
Sorry, Commissioner Watkins, I didn't hear the motion, sorry.
I didn't either, sir.
Sorry about that.
Let me just say this, I didn't know we had continuing ed that was required, so I really need an update.
Ooh, you better get busy, there's twelve hours.
Well, you have, you have hours with the, the ZBA, so those'll, those'll carry forward for you.
So that worked in my favor?
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, come on.
There were some emails they sent us too that said.
So how much does that save me? Can I let me?
Oh, you're done? No, I'm just kidding. Um, I'll have to go through and see, um, see what you've completed and I'll let you know, I'll know by the end of the week what you still have left to do.
Is it because I'm on the zoning board or what?
The Zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning Commission, both in their bylaws, require some continuing education hours per year, per term. So that way you, you all stay up to speed on.
I definitely.
On topics, on planning, best practices, ZBA, they know some new and, uh, updated case law, just to keep you at the forefront of what's going on and in the planning world.
I have no problem, but I did not know, thank you.
Ignorance of the law is no excuse, you know.
Check into those Michigan State.
Yes. Yes, absolutely, yes, yes, yes. Sorry, my brain has been all master plan for the last little bit, so now I can think of other things. Well, I'm still in it, but, you know.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you for coming. Big goods, not.
Fun, really?
It's fun.
Wow.
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Weber. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.